I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. I'd like to announce that this meeting is being televised live on local cable channel eight and 1072 HD. If we could all rise to pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To deliver our public, which is one nation, having God, in his world, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Does anyone have a public comment regarding anything not related to any agenda items tonight? If so, please check in with Mary Ann, two to my left. You can have three minutes to make your comment. Anyone in the audience have anything? Seeing none? Thank you. Next, I want to make certain that I always reach out for public comment if for some reason I miss it or I forget. I'm only human. Raise your hand and I will make sure you are heard. Just make sure that we're not being repetitive, but we certainly want to hear from anybody that chooses to give input on any application. Next, sitting tonight will be our four regular members with Charlie. Mike will be sitting presumably the next meeting, but certainly we can get Mike involved in reading some documents, et cetera, at this meeting. So that being said, Charlie, would you read the first continued hearing, please?
I shall. Okay, for the meeting of September 10th, 2025, continued hearings. Twenty-five Mon Anset Road. Close enough. Owners David J. and Diane C. Bazarian trustees request a special permit under 17417 and 17417.1 of the zoning bylaws to raise a three-bedroom pre-existing non-conforming dwelling and replace it with a new three-bedroom dwelling on the existing foundation on property located in the R3 and Papanesit Overlay Districts. MAP 123, parcel 107, Mashpee, Mass. Continued from July 23, 2023, hearings at the request of the applicant.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Attorney Christopher Corain representing David and Diane Bazarian are with me today along with their development team. As the board may recall, this project was brought before this board on July 23rd. I was not representing them at the time, but I was at the meeting, so I have a little bit of familiarity. And so this is basically a raise and replace that was keeping the same foundation. Other than that, there's also a covered porch which is being proposed as part of this project. So the house is non-conforming in one aspect, and that is that it's only 13 feet off of that side yard. So again, basically what's going on is it's going on, you know, being knocked down, going on the same footprint. And at the last meeting, as I call as a witness or, you know, viewing it, was that there was a concern from the board and David that there was not a dimension on this side and it looked like it may have been within 15 feet, which could have required a variance. So they went back to the plan, changed the covered porch. The covered porch is now 15.4 feet off the property line, so it conforms to all of your current minimum dimensional requirements, which for the side yard is 15 feet and from the front yard, because of the Papanesit overlay district, is 25 feet. Otherwise, there are no new non-conformities being created. The existing setback of 13 feet is not being intensified, it's not changing. There's going to be an IA system retrofit as proposed for this project. The lot coverage overall is currently 8.4%. It's going up to 9.9%. There's a small area of the lot that's impacted by the flood zone, but the property is not in the flood zone. So there's no requirement that it be flood zone compliant or anything like that. It was approved by the Conservation Commission. It is even, it's 50, more than 50 feet from that flood zone, so we don't need any relief under 17433. You know, I know that there were some reservations raised by David about the foundation, but again, you know, that's really a building department issue. You know, my clients are, were at the meeting, they heard what the board's concerns are and Dave's concerns, and they'll deal with that at the building permit stage. I really don't think it's, you know, we need to belabor that tonight. I think really what the issue was from a zoning perspective was making sure that that distance of the covered porch would not require a variance, which we have now, we're now showing as 15.4, which meets your requirement.
Just for clarity, I think the porch is 15.5.
15.5, I'm sorry.
It's 15.4, the nearest part of the building. So you're at 15.5, which is...
Still conforming, so we're okay. And again, along with the IA retrofit, basically staying within the footprint, well under the required lot coverage, the new house will certainly be building co-compliant. We think that, you know, it's not going to be a substantial detriment to the neighborhood. We're not creating any new non-conformities. It's residential, so two parking spaces, sufficient parking. You know, I took some pictures of the neighborhood that I provided with my narrative. You know, I think this will certainly be consistent with the area. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions this board may have.
So I'd like, should we read letters back into the record?
Sure.
We've already had, so. Charlie, letters read into the record, please.
I don't have anything for this meeting. We had letters from the four, didn't we?
I mean, we read them last time, but we should probably read them again. Does that make sense or not?
I think we read everything into the record the last time, the letters. I don't have it in the...
How does the board feel about that? We all right? We've already read them?
We already read them.
I think we did.
Yep. So I'll ask, I'll ask you when I'm not trying to put you on the spot, when I'm putting you on the spot. Did we read all the records into the, letters into the record?
Yes.
Okay. So we've already read all the letters into the record, I think I'm fine with that.
Yeah, generally speaking, this board gets the letter from the Health Department, the letter from Conservation.
Why don't we put it in a better way?
Okay.
Are there any new letters that we have not read into the record since the last time? Since the last public hearing? The extended public hearing?
Do you get revisions from the Conservation Commission? Is that what you're talking, you're talking about the letter?
Anything, I guess. So there were some revisions that were done with the Conservation Commission? Are those revisions on this plan?
Let me read the Conservation and then we can pick it apart, okay?
All right, why don't we read Conservation Board?
All right. Twenty-five Mon Anset Road. Owners David J. and Diane C. Bazarian trustees request a special permit under 17417, 17417.1 of the zoning bylaws to raise a three-bedroom pre-existing non-conforming dwelling and replace it with a new three-bedroom dwelling on the existing foundation on property located in the R3 and Papanesit overlay districts. MAP 123, parcel 107, Mashpee, Mass. Continued from July 23rd. The Conservation Commission issued an order of conditions approving this project at their June 12, 2025 public hearing. That's all we have from Conservation. Board of Health for the same location. Board of Health, raise and replace will trigger the IA 1000 regulation requiring nitrogen removal to be added to the septic, house to remain three-bedroom. That's all we have from Board of Health. I don't have any other new letters from Abutters or anybody else.
Something that is a pet peeve of mine, when you see a revision on a plan, and I'm not going to hold up the discussion for this, you see revision, revision one, August 2020, 25. What did he revise? It's a secret.
Oh, well, I'll tell you what he revised.
But I'm just saying, it should be in the plan. It should say revision date and what was revised.
Right. It would have been the zoning table to end the 15.5.
That would be, you know, we keep that a secret.
I know.
That's stupid. But anyway, all right. So that being said, David, you have any input on this?
No, zoning, they fixed everything for zoning, but I do want to reserve my concerns about the foundation and, you know, keep it the first deck, which I wasn't aware of at the last meeting, but I just want to reserve my concerns.
Sure. Yeah, understood, and they're...
But it's zoning issues. I have no zoning issues, Mr. Chair.
Great. So I just want to say one last time, and it's out of our lane in my opinion. I think the applicant is making a mistake in that, but you know what? It's out of our lane in my opinion. That's something he'll have to deal with, the applicant and Mr. Morris. So I think it's important that you're aware of that.
No, I think they're clear where, and, you know, they're paying the professionals to put their stamps on them, so.
There you go. I'm going to go to the audience at this point. Anyone in the audience want...
One more. All right, go ahead. Regarding what Board of Health said, regulation requiring nitrogen removal be added to the septic. That's all said, is it?
There is, there is going to be an IA...
A sledgehammer system.
Yeah, if you look at the note, there's going to be a sledgehammer IA upgrade to retrofit to the existing system.
It's an IA system already.
Yeah, it's coming.
Yeah, I would have thought, when he said that, me and the Board of Health agent, I would have hoped that he said something like, it has an IA system.
Yeah.
Because the sledgehammer system was a questionable IA system for a while. Then I think it became an approved IA system.
Right.
And I don't think they'd be showing a sledgehammer unless, sledgehammer unless it was an IA system. But I wish his letter was a little different, but I think we're okay with it because it is, in my opinion, an approved IA system. On Wilson Grove, two or three of the applications we've seen have been sledgehammer systems and required an IA system. Between the lines, I think we're fine.
Yeah, and my guess is that, you know, the board else still has to, they're going to put their stamp on this thing, too.
What we may want to do is make it contingent upon satisfaction of the Board of Health statement. If there were a, if there were a motion made, just make sure that that's dealt with, please, Charlie?
But again, it is shown on the plan, hasn't it?
Yeah, I think it's been dealt with, but...
Yep. Wait a second, let me just get my...
I'm going to go to the audience and come back to the board.
Okay.
Anyone in the audience having to say about this application? Okay, board members again.
I'm good.
Go ahead.
I'm good.
Everybody good?
I'm good.
So Charlie, you understand that you should, including unlimited to Board of Health comments need to be dealt with?
Yep.
Can I get a close of the public hearing, please?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a issuance of...
A motion?
Motion in reference to the application.
Motions are already prepared for us to kind of revise them to make sure that they fit what we'll discuss.
That was a secret.
So this is the motion right here.
And...
Mary Ann takes care of all of the hard stuff.
And we might want to mention to them, if there's anything that's not in there, we add it in.
Okay.
So we're starting off in a great position, thanks to Mary Ann, and we work it to get it hopefully in the correct position at the end. Okay, to make a motion relative to 25 Mon Anset Road, owners David J. and Diane C. Bazarian trustees request a special permit under 17417 and 17417.1 of the zoning bylaws to raise a three-bedroom pre-existing non-conforming dwelling and replace it with a new three-bedroom dwelling on the existing foundation on property located in the R3 and Papanesit overlay districts. MAP 123, parcel 107, Mashpee, Mass. With the following conditions. Motion number one. The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under Mass General Law's 40A Section 9. Number two, plot plan. Proposed site plan 25 Mon Anset Road, Mashpee, Mass. Prepared for Diane Bazarian, prepared by J.C. Engineering, Inc. Date May 28, 2025. Revised August 20, 2025. Stamped and signed by John Churchill, registered land surveyor number 48066 and civil engineer number 41807. Number three, building plans. Prepared for 25 Mon Anset Road, Mashpee, Mass. Prepared by Vision Design and Construction. Date August 28, 2025. A-1.1 title sheet, A-1.2 elevation drawings, A-1.3 basement plans, A-1.4 first floor plan, A-1.5 second floor plan. Number four, conditioned on all department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health and Conservation Department comments previously discussed. Number five, any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Number six, condition that the applicant seek and obtain the Building Department review in reference to the tree bylaw, Chapter 175 of the town bylaws prior to the application of a building permit. Number seven, board finds under 17417, 17417.1 that the proposed project as submitted is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing conditions prior to removal of the existing structure and that there is adequate land area on the subject lot to provide sufficient parking and there are no new non-conformities being created.
Second.
I'm sorry, I was looking at the plan and I shouldn't have been. You did include the Board of Health issue, right?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Very good. I saw something, but it's fine. All right. Yeah, no, I will. No problem.
Send it.
Sometimes I feel like I can spend one last second.
Hold it.
I will.
Yeah.
Well, I cleared out the garage, didn't I?
Yeah.
Yeah. We cleared out the room?
Oh, what, six people?
No, I guess not.
Six out of eight.
Okay. Three left. Any more stuff?
No, I think we got it all. No more plans down there, right? Can I send it?
You said there's more?
Yeah. I'll grab this stuff.
Oh.
Yeah, we can give it back to John.
I'll send it. One more.
Okay. So Michael, would you like to read the next continued hearing into the record?
Sure. Fifty-five Redwood Circle, owners Edward D. and Rudite E. Pell, written a request finding under Section 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for an addition on the right front side of a pre-existing non-conforming structure and reconfiguration of an existing deck on property located in R5 zoning district. MAP 27, parcel 97, Mashpee, Mass. Continued from July 23, 2025, at the request of the attorney.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Attorney Christopher Corain for the applicants. I dropped the ball a little bit, but if I read the Conserv, I read the comments from Conservation that's been continued to October 9th. So I know the board's preference not to hear these projects until they get through Conservation. I just forgot to put a letter into Mary Ann, so I'm doing it here tonight in person. So we'd need a continuance till the next, next date.
David, do you have something to say?
I'd like to say something before, before you accept the withdrawal.
No, no, continuance.
The continuance, I noticed on the frontage, the porch is at 36.8 to the stairs. The stairs, as you know...
There's another, there's another distance that shows it to... Thirty-six point eight to the porch, right?
It's to the end of the stairs.
I'll have them double check that.
Well, my concern is when they're, where they're putting the addition, they're removing the porch. You get four feet for an external for a required means of egress.
Right.
You get four feet. So this house, to me, it looks like it's in compliance for the frontage and the addition's going to make it at this 36.8 feet, so I think they're creating a new...
All right, I'll have them double check that, because, all right, I'll double check that.
So you're asking for an extension with that knowledge that you may need to deal with that before?
Correct.
Instead of just coming back and being told about that then?
Correct, I appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem. So you're hereby asking for an extension until?
I, I think our next meeting's October 8th, but I think Conservation's on the 9th, so I don't think that's going to work, so.
Yeah.
I guess the November 13th, I think it's the 13th.
It is November 12th.
November 12th.
All set with it, Mary Ann?
Yep.
Someone like to make a motion that we accept an extension until November 12th?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Great, thank you.
You're going to sign something, right?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay.
But not starting yet.
Excuse me.
Everybody had to sign this, I think.
Yep.
William?
It's my doctor.
What is it, what's it say?
Today's the 10th. Nine, ten, twenty-five.
Okay, Charlie, would you like to read Nine Mutiny Way into the record, please?
By the way, that's a wonderful name for a street. I like that.
All right, new hearings. Nine Mutiny Way. Owner Scott D. Wolf requests a written finding under 17417 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a 24-foot by 28-foot attached garage to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on property located in an R3 zoning district. MAP 90, parcel 27, Mashpee, Mass.
Hello, I'm Scott Wolf. I'm just, I didn't bring any paperwork with me. I thought I should have brought a plan, I guess. It shows on the front corner of the lot on the left side that there's a small area that's within the flood zone. The house is outside of that or the addition, the proposed addition for the garage. So, and the house is in a non-conforming now, the garage is set back further than the front corner of the house that's existing. And I have 15 foot five on the setbacks on the left-hand side for the garage.
Okay. You all set, sir?
Yep.
I think there's some issues...
My first question is, what is your existing lot coverage and what is your proposed lot coverage? It's not on here.
Oh, I, I'm at loss, I guess.
You've got to know that.
Yeah, so it's 10,000 square feet. The house is 1,500 square feet existing.
Well, you've got other issues here, though, so I think, and we want to certainly work with you, but we need to make sure we follow protocol, so I think we have a lot of things that we need to go through in the site plan.
No question.
Well, so you got lot coverage, so you want to have existing lot coverage, proposed lot coverage, existing building coverage, proposed building coverage. So you want those, right?
Mm-hmm.
So that's, you can always ask Mary Ann or David.
Yep.
You can call me, I could care less, I'm more than happy to help you.
Yep.
And you got to list your zoning, you got to list the, you know, the setbacks within that zone on this plan. I'm just trying to think of all the things. There's a lot of things...
So it's an R3, so I have to put that on that plan.
What zone is it in? What are the criteria within that zone? Lot coverage, side yard, front yard, all those types of things.
Sorry, I didn't realize I had to have all that.
Yeah, I would take, I would take like a site plan that just came through this board, which is public information, and take a look at that and everything on that site plan, just about, other than a leach field, although...
It's got to be a leach field and septic's going to be on it.
Yeah, well, it's got the septic on it, existing septic system, but this has to go, I mean, do we have comments?
The question is, how close is it to?
Yeah. I mean, you've got, you've got some things here that you're going to have to deal with.
The septic system right now is in the far back corner. Everything's over.
Right, you need distance from the house.
Did we have letters in the file from Board of Health and Conservation on this?
We, yeah, we have...
Have you seen those letters, sir?
Basically...
It's all seemed fairly straightforward. Nobody really objected to anything.
Why don't we do this?
I got approval from...
What have you got from Board of Health or Conservation?
Board of Health, Nine Mutiny Way. House to remain three-bedroom while still connected to septic. Room above garage is not considered a bedroom. So it really doesn't... Tell us anything.
It's a, it's a two-car garage under, kind of, and it's, above the garage is unfinished. So I'm basically adding a two-car garage, 24 by 20.
Frankly, I'm not sure whether they mean, since the house is still connected to septic, that we don't look at that.
I presume town sewers coming your direction, so...
Been a year and a half, I would expect.
Yeah, yeah, you're probably Phase 1B or 2.
Phase 2, yeah.
Yeah, so you'll be tied in a sewer somewhere down the road, but...
So in the provision of doing the garage, what I was going to do is come out the side of the house and then put a pipe out so that, for future connection for the town sewer.
You want to go over that with the sewer inspector?
I already did. I went over everything with those guys.
Yeah, those are all things I think you need to discuss with them.
Yeah, I did.
I would take the site plan that's, various site plans, I don't know if you want to go to an engineer and have him help you with this, but minimally it's...
Well, I can, I can have my, my survey, my guy that did the engineer or the site plan for the house.
So...
Because basically, you're looking for the coverage of the existing house right now, and then the cover, lot coverage would be existing.
Well, I'm looking for more than that. If you look at the site plan that we just did, that the council just submitted to this board and this board just approved?
Yeah.
The application, first application here, which was Mon Anset Road?
Yeah.
If you look at that site plan, other than the fact that it's an IA system and it's gone in depth because it's a Board of Health plan also, it probably used it for the Board of Health, bottom line is, is most things on that plan we need. So I just don't want to be, you only need this, and have you come back and say, well, you said I only needed this, and then I find five other things. So you could look at our regulations, actually spell out a lot of it, too, do they not? So look at our regulations.
What about the septic design?
I'm not saying we need septic design, it's on your existing plan, it looks to be out of the way in the backyard.
Yeah.
The Board of Health agent doesn't seem to be concerned about it. I'm not saying you need that.
Yeah.
But what I am saying you need is more than just lot coverage and, you know, zoning, et cetera. There are more things in that plan that you're going to need.
Are you proposing a driveway?
Yeah.
It's going to need a curb cut, right?
Yeah.
You're going to have to go to the...
Highway department.
Right. You show existing paved driveway, but it's on the right-hand side, your garage is on the left-hand side, which like Rojana just said, correctly so, your driveway now is going, is getting moved, so you need a curb cut.
Right.
You've got to process here, that you've got to follow.
Catherine Laurent from the DPW.
Excuse me?
You need to go to Catherine Laurent.
Yes.
Of the DPW.
Yeah.
Tell them what you're planning, show them, I need a curb cut authorization from you.
From them.
Yeah.
And I have to show proposed new driveway.
And like I said, I would take that...
You really need to have this worked on.
Yeah, I would take that plan. I'd go through our zoning regulations, they state the things you need, our application regulations state them, and then I'd look at a site plan that's already gone through this board and use that as a baseline, maybe, I don't know, but I'm trying to stay away from when you come back, you saying...
Yeah, well, this is my first time ever applying to the ZBA with you guys.
Well, I get it, we're fine.
I thought I was under the impression it would be fairly simple.
Well, you know...
It's a two-car garage and I'm outside of the wetland zone.
Yeah, but you know what you're asking for, you're here for a reason, and when you come in front of the ZBA, you're here, he didn't just to give you a building permit, you came to this board for a reason, and we need to make sure that the plans are correct.
So one of the things you might want to do is come into the Building Department when David is here, sit and make studious notes.
Sure.
Exactly what you need on this plan.
Sure, all right.
So as Ron said, you're not back and forth, back and forth.
Now, I can tell you, that doesn't preclude us, when you come back, to look at this plan that you resubmit and us say, you need this or this now.
Right. I can have my survey, my guy that did the engineer or the site plan for the house. Because basically, you're looking for the coverage of the existing house right now, and then the cover, lot coverage would be existing.
Well, I'm looking for more than that. If you look at the site plan that we just did, that the council just submitted to this board and this board just approved. The application, first application here, which was Monahanset Road. If you look at that site plan, other than the fact that it's an IA system and it's gone in depth because it's a Board of Health plan also, it probably used it for the Board of Health. Bottom line is, is most things on that plan we need. So I just don't want to be, you only need this, and have you come back and say, well, you said I only needed this, and then I find five other things. So you could look at our regulations, actually spell out a lot of it too, do they not? So look at our regulations.
What about the septic design?
I'm not saying we need septic design, it's on your existing plan, it looks to be out of the way in the backyard. The Board of Health agent doesn't seem to be concerned about it. I'm not saying you need that. What I am saying you need is more than just lot coverage and, you know, zoning, et cetera. There are more things in that plan that you're gonna need.
Are you proposing a driveway?
Yeah.
It's gonna need a curb cut, right?
Yeah.
You're gonna have to go to the...
Highway department.
You show existing paved driveway, but it's on the right-hand side, your garage is on the left-hand side, which like Rojana just said, correctly so, your driveway now is getting moved, so you need a curb cut.
Right.
You've got a process here that you've got to follow.
Catherine Laurent from the DPW.
Excuse me?
You need to go to Catherine Laurent.
Yes.
Of the DPW. Tell them what you're planning, show them, I need a curb cut authorization from you.
From them.
Yep.
And I have to show a proposed new driveway.
And like I said, I would take that...
You really need to have this worked on.
I would take that plan, I'd go through our zoning regulations, they state the things you need, our application regulations state them, and then I'd look at a site plan that's already gone through this board and use that as a baseline, maybe, I don't know, but I'm trying to stay away from when you come back.
Yeah, well, this is my first time ever applying to the ZBA with you guys. I thought I was under the impression it would be fairly simple. It's a two-car garage and I'm outside of the wetland zone.
Yeah, but you know what you're asking for? You're here for a reason, and when you come in front of the ZBA, you're here, he didn't just to give you a building permit, you came to this board for a reason, and we need to make sure that the plans are correct.
So one of the things you might want to do is come into the building department when David is here, sit and make studious notes. Exactly what you need on this plan. So as Ron said, you're not back and forth, back and forth.
Now, I can tell you, that doesn't preclude us, when you come back, to look at this plan that you resubmit and us say, you need this or this now. Because I know, I understand what you're trying to do, instead of going to an attorney and an engineer, I understand that's dollars and cents, but it's...
Well, you know, the cost of construction needs to change, you're trying to keep it realistic.
Totally understand.
I'm like, I'm a builder, this is my own home, I'm trying to just, you know, build a simple garage, I didn't realize it had to turn into something.
And I'm not saying you need to...
Years ago, it was pretty, I've been here for 40-some years, it was pretty realistic before now.
I'm not saying you need to do that, I'm just saying that because you're not doing that, you're not getting that experience, you're gonna have a lesson, and I don't want to be part of the, I've been back six times. Because you may have to come back six times.
Well, the thing is, apparently, it's not gonna happen this year, then.
Well...
It seems like it's gonna be...
Are you close to wetlands anywhere?
No, the...
No, not, it's a flood zone.
Mutiny Way is not within wetlands jurisdiction according to our administration.
Well, that's good.
I just don't have the 50 feet from the flood zone. It's a non-conformity right now.
What do you mean, 50 feet?
From the flood zone. I thought it was at the new bylaw or something, I thought it was 50 feet.
Well, so that raises the following issue, you may need a variance from this board, correct?
It's a non-conformity now, I'm not going any further.
Well, look at, but look at your...
You said you're not, you're within 50...
Your proposed garage is stepped back three or four feet, so that means it could be closer to the resource area than the house is.
Ron, let me make a statement.
It's in the front?
It's on the front, it's a very small portion on the front. I'm sorry, go ahead.
So where is the flood zone?
Right here.
It shows it on...
It's in the front, see it right here?
It's in the plan, on the plan.
Got it.
The house and garage is outside of that flood zone.
So stop right there, are you saying...
But the question is, where is it? How far does it protrude onto your property?
That is a certified...
I think I can help. It is my opinion that you are getting closer to the flood zone by building this garage. If you look at the flood zone, which is elevation 10, if you take that garage, the distance to the flood zone as compared to the house, your garage is being built closer to the flood zone, which means you're making it more non-conforming, which means you're getting closer to the flood zone, technically you'd have to come to this board.
No, that, this affects...
Am I correct?
He's at the board, yeah.
No, but for a variance.
No, not for a variance, no.
What would he need if he's, let's say right now to the flood zone, he's, let's say he's 30 feet to the house, and now the building of the garage is gonna put him 20 feet to the wetlands, to the flood zone. What would he need?
A finding.
So then he's gonna need a finding. My point is, is...
The house runs parallel to that zone, it looks like it's further, I set the house...
Well, the reason why I questioned that, David, was... I didn't want to get into, I don't want to make it worse than it is, but anyway.
He already has that non-conformity.
Right, right, so he's gonna have to have a written finding that it's not more detrimental, right? My point is this, the application he has in front of the board right now doesn't include a written finding for a wetland setback.
And it also brings into play...
I mean...
It also brings into play the percent lot coverage.
Correct, yes.
That's gotta be on there.
So, yeah, we do have to, we do have to, does that mean he has to refile, Marianne?
I think so.
I think so, because of the advertisement. You're gonna advertise for written finding now.
I believe he has to refile.
You're gonna need to make an appointment with these guys.
See, here's the thing, we want to make sure you're as squeaky clean as you can be the next time you come in, so that we can be productive, and so that's why we want, we're trying to bring these things up to you now.
Yeah, this is all, see...
I have some more to add, even.
See, I was just under the impression that I wasn't any more non-conforming than what was pre-existing, you're bringing it up and saying I am.
Well, if you want, I can show you how your garage is closer to that flood zone.
I would like to see it.
Yeah, let me show you something.
Let's get this dotted line here.
Come on up here. So watch this. Can I write on this one?
You are writing.
So from here to there, as compared to there to there, which is closer? That or that? Oh, yeah, I do have a rule. No, I have a rule. I come from, watch this.
You know, we're talking...
There you go.
It affects the...
So measure from there to there. If that one's closer than the other one, you need a written finding.
30, probably.
30 or 40.
Yep.
Is it closer?
It's by 60.
I'd have to look, I don't have a written finding.
I guess it depends upon where you're at.
Yeah, it's just something, I just...
Yeah, no, I... All we're trying to do is to do everything we can, so one stop, you know?
Well, so, okay, so I guess this would be the question. Is this a possible garage? Oh, no, I'm just gonna say I'm done.
I'm not against...
No, because like, if I'm not, if I'm gonna go through all this, try to build the garage, I'm like, this is...
As one member, I can always speak for myself, I see no issues that I would deny your application, but I will caveat that by saying I don't have all and all.
The problem with making that statement is, we don't have enough information.
Fair enough, that's fair enough. If I don't have the proper information...
On the surface, I'm okay with it. On the surface, I'm totally fine, with the fact that you're six feet, let's say you're closer, I'm okay with that, too. I'm just telling you that when you bring all this information back and we look at it, it may, at that point, I might say, now I'm against...
So when you ask for the driveway to be laid out on there as well, so my, looking at that, so as I lay out the driveway, do I want to be further away from, you know, so now I have to want to come in on the middle of the lot, so that could be a question on where the driveway enters to stay away from that flood zone, you know what I mean? Is that gonna be an issue?
No, you don't have, you can go straight out. You go straight out.
I would spend a couple of minutes with that gentleman right there, if he has the time, I'm sure he, he'll take his time for you. Spend a little time with Marianne, and then I'd look at some of the applications before, and hopefully you're gonna gain enough knowledge that you're gonna be able to make this plan presentable to this board that you can make a decision.
Yep. Can I say something right before we close that? I mean, I love the design, I love the garage, it's very doable, so I would say that, I wouldn't worry, I wouldn't have bought this mission, you know what I mean? This is very good. I think that there is another potential zoning problem, because I want to say two things. You've got two means of egress on this building, which is beautiful, you can set this up as a single apartment in a future date, but the means of egress is this, the one door has a deck going into the setback, which is a non-conformity. So you're creating a non-conformity there, so that wouldn't be allowed under this, under this...
If I take that off?
Yeah, you probably have to. You can't, you can't put that in.
I could put a doorway in...
Unless, if you're making a, if you convert it into an ADU in a later date, you can, you're allowed to put that egress in, because it's required, okay?
Take it off now?
Take it off now.
Down the road if I want.
Yeah, if you're gonna change that. All right, so you're gonna need to do that. The other thing I wanted to mention is the retaining walls, it's, those need to be engineered, they have to be stamped and signed up by an engineer. It's a lot of weight, it's, no problem with it, but they're gonna have to be designed...
I built those retaining walls that I have there myself, so maintaining walls, they've been there over 20 years.
Yeah, but they're over four feet, they need to be engineered.
No, I kept them within, no, three, yeah, go ahead.
They are, they are, you know what I mean, it's, but I love the design and this is very doable.
All right, I wasn't planning on having any of the retaining walls, I was gonna have them set back, and I don't like a wall over 30 inches, so that's what I was trying to do.
Yeah, but they're very deep, they hold back a lot of land, that's what, that's what the engineers...
I was just sloping it off, off to the side.
I would require a stamp plan for them, that's all.
Another thing you want to be careful of, I have to, certainly of myself and this board, is when you put a driveway in there, and you gotta pitch that driveway from the garage floor to the road, I presume, you're now taking the water that falls on that driveway and putting it onto the road, taking it off your property, which is a no-no.
Well, what I was trying to do is, obviously I don't want water running all the way down, but what I was trying to do is where my existing driveway is over here, like right here, so that comes in straight, so I was gonna come up here, uphill. Right now, this is all vegetation and so forth, I was just gonna let the water come into here and contain it into the property.
As long as a statement can be made to this board that you're not taking whatever water is going right here to here. See what I'm saying? You cannot, most plans that come in front of this board would have an area well, maybe two or three area wells, taking your roof drainage and taking your driveway drainage and putting it into the ground. And so if you're not hiring an engineer, you probably can't design that drainage. I mean, I'm just saying, there's some...
Takes calculations.
Oh, my God, it's blowing my mind.
Yeah, it's...
It's a lot of work.
Huh?
It's a lot of work, it is.
I've done this forever, it's like, you got one drywall that I have to worry about right now, that the water that's coming off of the building, right now, everything's falling off of that and running right down now. So if I have, if I take here and I'm just taking off that one side with a drywall off to the side, why can't I do that?
Because, correct me if I'm wrong, this is...
And if I make that driveway gravel and just allow it to, and not pave it...
Is this all natural material, natural, right now, tree and, what's there right now?
There's two trees right here, there's a tree here that's ready to fall on my neighbor's house, and there's three trees here, or three trees right up here that are, the other trees down there.
What I'm saying to you is, this area right here, if you did a drainage calculation, a study of drain... I'm just saying, if you were to, and then you put a driveway in, the velocity would be substantially increased because you're taking natural area and changing it.
I was just trying to keep this in layman's terms, I was trying to do it in a reasonable expense and not overshoot with engineers and engineer this. I get it with the retaining wall, I could come off of the foundation with the retaining wall and rebar and take care of that.
Yeah, I just want, just to...
And be done with that, but as far as like over in here, to have to go back, I could have this guy calculate whatever drainage I would need, but I don't want to turn it into a $20,000 drainage deal, you know what I mean? For a driveway and a drywall where I'm just trying to come off of a roof and...
But you gotta understand, this board's job is not to look at dollars and cents as to what needs to be, we need to look at it.
I understand, but I'm not, I'm not trying to dump an entire, you know, talking of a small driveway that I'm, I'm going uphill with rather than downhill, because I don't want it to go downhill and hook around the wall.
Just trying to report to you the issues that we brought up, when and if you come back and you show a driveway without any drainage dealing with any water off that driveway, it's gonna be an issue.
So if I did a, if I did a, you know, are you worrying about the runoff from the building itself?
So I'm worried about capturing the water from that impervious roof, right? So you're gonna have downspouts coming down, it's gonna point low.
One downspout on the left-hand side.
So that's gonna take the whole roof, it's gonna put it at a spurtin' spot, and then the whatever water's coming off your driveway. So those areas, you don't have to worry about the existing house, that's existing drainage, right? I'm not trying to change your existing house.
Mashpee doesn't have a, got a bylaw now, so...
What bylaw?
That house never had got us, and still doesn't.
You gotta contain the runoff from the roof, you gotta contain it on the property, so you gotta make calculations.
So if I, if I do calculations for the roof runoff and then just put a drywall off to the side for the roof and...
As long as they handle, let's say, I think we've been required a 10-year storm. As long as it meets a 10-year storm criteria, if you do them, I can, I can review them.
Okay, okay, and is there anything else that you're seeing besides the egress on the side?
No, 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 I made the two points.
Okay.
I just, I think it's important that if you choose to come back with these changes, just be aware that we're gonna look at it and we could say, oh, what about? I mean, it could happen.
Right.
So, I mean, that happens even with an engineer that's been doing this for years in front of this board, would've said, oh, what about, I don't like this.
You know, I just, I just watched like so many people, like the tree thing was something that blew my mind away as well, going in front of that and trying to anticipate and, you know, being, have to look at a mature tree and not realize that the plant, the tree that you're planting is gonna have a maturity level at a certain diameter, whereas your planting has to become so extreme that it just kinda starts blowing my mind. It's like, listen, we gotta have some, I understand the principle of it for larger lots, and I think it's a great idea, but when you get into smaller lots, you really have to take a, you know, pedal backwards, you know, especially in the case of these small lots, like you're just trying to do, you know, small things, you know?
The trouble is, is a lot of small lots, and once you start to add all those small lots up, it makes it a big lot.
I, I understand, but, you know, with the setbacks on 40 and 40, and, you know, anyways...
I think at this time, you might want to request a continuance from the board.
Yeah, I get a continuance and...
You can either withdraw or you can...
Oh, continuance at this point, I'll see, I'll go to the next one, I'll see if I can...
It's gonna be re-advertised, right?
Yeah.
So what would that look like? What are the dates it'd have to re-advertize?
Marianne, I have a question.
Would it be past October?
Is he better withdrawing because it asks you re-advertize and then just start the process over?
No, I could probably add...
All right, it's up to you, it's up to you, all right. So you're asking for a continuance until November 12?
12.
Are you gonna be able to advertise correctly between now and then?
So it's November and not October, October's already passed, I see, okay.
So you're asking for a continuance until November 12, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
So I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Can I meet you sometime and just...
Call the office.
Do you have something to sign now, Marianne?
You gotta sign before...
Before you leave, sir, you have something to sign for?
Because I usually...
Papers?
Yeah.
I appreciate your time, and I appreciate the enthusiasm.
Good luck.
You know, it's just like, you know...
Don't feel bad, I mean, like I said, there are people that, there are engineers that have come here for years that get denied because they didn't finish the site plan correctly, or it's in, or we weren't happy with it, so...
I understand that we want to make sure that we draw our, you know, eyes and...
Yep, we have to.
You know, this is new to me, you know, I apologize for...
No need for an apology.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Easy enough.
Okay, Mike, would you like to read 45 Nahoyden Road into the record, please?
Of course. 45 Nahoyden Road. Owner Richard H. Gorbady requests a written finding under section 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a front entry addition in place of an existing deck, a living room addition in place of a rear deck, and a bathroom addition in the primary bedroom on property located in R3 zoning district, map 125, parcel 116, Mashpee, Mass.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Jeff Bright of Synergy Home Improvements in representation of Mr. and Mrs. Gorbady at 45 Nahoyden Road. As you probably see and the aforementioned reading, we are looking for relief from the 174-17 for the pre-existing non-conforming front setback, in particular for the front bump-out addition. The proposed work is essentially a build straight up off that front existing deck for the purpose of providing a more usable front egress. You may see also in the application, this was approved once in 2018. At the time, the homeowners were using the property as a summer home, it has now become their permanent home, and just days ago, actually, Richard underwent a knee replacement. This is somewhat of a arduous location, right at the front door as the bottom of the stairs, where the stairs upstairs is a raised ranch-style home. where the stairs upstairs is a raised ranch-style home. It's very tight, very arduous, and actually, overall, the main level of the home is quite arduous as well, actually, as far as space goes. So we're looking for relief for that pre-existing non-conforming setback. I also have been in communication with Drew at Conservation because the property is in a floodplain, although it was his delineation in a phone call just yesterday, actually, that his requirement is an RDA only. I realize that it's the board's preference to have that already done. I actually was informed that it could, you know, applications could run concurrently. I'm not sure what the board feels about that.
Who informed you of that?
Drew. He had mentioned that he would speak to Building and that, at least verbally, that he wouldn't, he would advise the board that you shouldn't have any need to rule based on that RDA, and that it seemed pretty straightforward. In fact, I'm not even sure that an RDA was filed the last time. Of course, that was six years ago and six years.
Has the RDA been filed?
No, I asked him if he, if, and I probably should have asked Building, but he said no. He said the next hearing was on October 9th, and I had a couple of weeks to get that in. He told me that so long as I, he was informed that I was intent on filing it, that, you know, it would be fine on there, on his end. You know, if you have a different position, I understand, of course.
It's in his comment. Well, I have some questions, but let's keep the process moving. So, letters, please?
Well, we've got Board of Health and Conservation. Let's go to the Board of Health first. The proposed additions do not have a foundation, therefore no septic setbacks are infringed upon, so no septic inspection is required. Floor plans do not indicate any additional bedrooms, so no increase in floor. And Conservation is a little bit unusual, as you've indicated. 45 Nahoyden Road. Property lies within the AE flood zone, which is jurisdictional wetlands. A permit filing with Conservation will be required. RDA requests for determination of applicability. The Conservation Department recommends that the ZBA proceed with their review of this project at their upcoming meeting prior to the hearing before CONCOM, which won't be until October 9. This project is pretty straightforward, and we don't anticipate any issues from the CONCOM where this project is currently presented. So we don't have any formal approval, just an indication that they probably will approve.
Well, we'll have to discuss that as a board, any of the letters. That's a rabbit hole, right? So, any other letters from anyone else?
Nothing else, I think that's it.
So board questions, right, and comments? I'm a little concerned about that. I just don't want to go down a rabbit hole that's going to start us going to that area. I'm open-minded to suggestions from the rest of the board, I'm not digging in.
I'm in agreement with you, Ron.
I am too.
I think we need to, yeah, and I have some other input on the document, I think we need the site plan.
Yes, sir.
I'm a little concerned about, so your lot coverage calculations. So we've got lot coverage calculations, lot area, existing building, dwelling, existing shed, total square foot of structures, then you. So we need structure coverage and we need lot area coverage.
Yes, sir.
I'm not seeing how that is. So total square foot of structures, 20.4.
Yep.
I'm not seeing, I guess I'm seeing total square foot of structures and proposed coverage. I don't see a bifurcation with the two. Do we have both of them here? I don't see it.
Yes, sir, on the left side of the.
So you've got lot coverage as per zoning, which is the lot minus any floodplain. Can't use floodplain in the calculation.
Okay.
All right, so I don't see any depiction of floodplain on this, other than it says that you're in the floodplain.
Correct, I agree.
So where is it?
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have any delineation of that on there.
So how do you know what your lot coverage is?
I don't know, I have the.
And I'm not being, I'm not being.
No, no, it's understandable, it's understandable. It's my, it's my understanding that this area, the entire thing, is a floodplain.
So that means, here's what it should say, lot coverage 100% prior, 100% post.
In fact, I think the whole neighborhood is.
There you go, but it doesn't say that on here. See what I'm saying?
No, but we also need structure.
Yeah, well, it's got structure, but it's kind of convoluted. It should say structure, lot, lot, should say structure coverage prior, prior or post. Structure coverage after construction.
Yes, sir, proposed coverage, 19.2, it's actually going to be reduced. It's getting smaller, actually.
Well, so the first one, so you're saying the total square foot of structures, that is existing?
Yes, sir.
So the 20.4 is existing?
Yes, sir.
And so the 19.2 is proposed?
Yes, sir.
All right, so I'm okay with that, but I do have a problem with under, remember, that's utilized by this board to understand what you're doing in reference to this, this house. What are you doing, are you building, you know, something that shouldn't be on this lot because it's huge? Has nothing to do, per se, with your zoning requirement, which is at that point, lot coverage. Which would be, it's going to say in this plan, if the whole lot is in flood zone, existing 100%, proposed 100%.
Understood, understood.
Right?
I can have an edit made.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any existing plans. All I see is proposed. So the question is, is this existing?
You know, I leave that up to the applicant, but the way I see it, that's proposed. That's proposed, right?
There's two additions and.
If you look, if you look on the upper-left section, there's currently a deck in the back-left corner of the house.
Right, that's coming out.
It was just being removed.
Right.
Correct.
But there's two proposed additions.
Correct.
Is anything there now? Is it just vacant land?
No, there's a deck, a proposed addition on piers. It does say, it says EX deck at the top of it. But the 18-by-18-foot section on the back of the house, that's a deck right now. That's an existing deck. So the only new part of coverage that's actually on this plan is the 14-by-8 addition in the back-right corner that is essentially an extension of that current bedroom with a bathroom to go with it.
Yeah, I'd like to see proposed and plans and existing. Because I don't see that on there.
Right.
So you're telling me, but.
Yeah, we need to see that. And what's the approved leaching pits? What's going on with that?
I didn't, truth is, I didn't overthink it, it's the existing.
They're like Endeavour and Emily. What are they, are they there now?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay. So what are you going to do with the roof drainage? Are you going to tie them into those pits?
Yeah, in fact, no. In fact, that's not what I would do at all. In fact, even from the last case, I realized that.
You've had a learning curve.
Well, we always install them now.
Yeah.
It's been a standard for the last three or four years to install drywells. But those weren't actually on my building plans that are in this application. It is, it was also my, well, assumption and also hope that, you know, we could work that out at time of.
No, it's going to be worked out.
Oh, no, I mean, under your order of conditions, but I mean.
Well, we don't do an order of conditions. What we do is a decision, and that decision is going to be based on a plan. If that plan isn't correct, we're not going to, we're not going to reply to the plan.
Sure, so if you require a drywell.
Well, here's what we require, no water can leave this site in a 10-year storm. I'd like to see more like a 50-year storm, but minimum a 10-year storm cannot leave this site.
Sure.
So when you add those two roofs, or whatever roofs you're adding, the water's going to go into the ground.
Sure.
And so right now, I've got, I've got approved leaching pits in the middle of nowhere, but I have nothing going to them or nothing showing any connectivity to them.
Well, we have the septic tank that looks like it could be. See, underneath the proposed addition of piers, it says approved septic tank.
That's correct, it could be the pits for that tank.
Probably.
So those tanks you're not tying into?
Yeah, no, we're not, we're not.
But my point is this, you've got roof lines that are impervious.
Sure.
And you've got to take care of the water that's coming off those roof lines.
Yeah, understood.
Somehow, somewhere.
Understood.
And so this plan is deficient in dealing with that. Are you changing, I see nothing on this plan that shows a driveway.
Where not, well, there is a.
Not that you're changing it, I just, I think it's important for you to show it.
Sure.
You can park it spots.
Yeah, I mean.
Can't park on the street.
You've got, you've got lot coverage issue, you've got a line that's, if you're saying that 100% of the lot is in, and it actually says it, interior site is in flood zone AE12, I get it.
So it's 100%.
Yeah, so it's going to be lot coverage, 100% pre and existing.
Sure.
Yep.
Existing and proposed.
And driveway and drywells.
Structure coverage.
Yes.
Existing and proposed.
Right.
Yeah, I can see how reading that, you know, I understand. I understand that point, and that can easily be clarified.
Yeah.
And typed out and written in a more concise way, so anybody, you know, because I could totally see that. I mean, I personally was, you know, made sense of it, but it's no problem.
Yeah, what we also want to see is existing and then proposed, two different ones.
Oh, you would, you do, you would do require a site plan that is.
Shows existing.
Only as it is now.
And proposed, exactly.
Two copies.
I don't know how many copies, but.
Oh, no, no, I mean, two different, actual, two different plans, okay?
Can you understand where we're at with this? I just want to make sure, so when you come back, because it's probably going to be a month and a half, two months.
Oh, I totally understand, yeah.
If the board chooses to, whatever, whatever board this, whatever decision this board makes, I'm presuming it's going to be to extend. And that being said, I'm trying to cover everything we can.
Oh, sure.
So that we can deal with it at the next meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Do you have anything, David?
Yeah, I've got a ton of things.
Okay, well, you know what? Before I go to the audience, why don't we just say, David, what have you got?
I got, again, this, we got the same issue that, 174-33. It's not, they need a finding for that, it's not, it's the same exact thing as we just had. So it has to be refiled. I disagree, I looked at the flood maps, I disagree that this whole thing's in the flood zone. In fact, if I owned this property, I would want to take the house out of the flood zone and require, I'd request a Loma. Because I think, you know, I don't, I don't think that this is in the flood zone, the house. There might be a small portion of the house in the flood zone, but I know the, just even by looking at the map, you could tell that this whole lot is not in the flood zone.
Okay.
That's good for you.
I was going, I was, well, I was going on recollection of looking on the website at the flood map.
With that being said, the lot, again, the calculations for the lot coverage has to change, whether it's 100% or, you know, it's going to be down to like 13. The lot area is 13.1, and I believe it would be down to maybe 10,000 square feet after you deduct the lock zone, the flood zone. I presume that these are being built on piers only because of the septic issue.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's really not for the flood zone thing. So we do have to refile again.
And by the way, he's got one of those footings you got, looks like it's sitting on top of the tank.
It should be 10 feet from the tank.
Yeah, but see the tank, see the tank, David?
Yeah, I do.
Looks like one of those footings on the corner of that deck is going to be sitting on it. It's probably on an H20-loaded tank.
Exactly.
Very close.
That's between David and you, not us.
The trouble is, that deck is already there, I'm right? The deck's already there.
Correct.
Existing deck.
Yeah, but you're going to put a bigger load on it.
Oh, yeah, it's going to, it would be rebuilt, yeah.
That's between you and the zoning, the billing department, but I would be very concerned.
But that's, it's, the septic, how far close to the, how close to the septic is not.
No, but I'm saying the corner of the deck is actually.
On the septic!
Yeah, you can't do that.
Right.
Yeah, so it's something, you might want to look at. You're depicting with this plan right here that the corner of the deck, and you're showing footings on that corner, are on the tank.
It is, well, it was also my presumption that that would come down to some framing, engineered framing there.
That's what I'm saying, that's between you and him.
Sure, that was my assumption, that that was not really.
But I'm just raising it today, but I mean, that's a little funky setup.
Sure. And it's, it is, it can be somewhat arduous to tell exactly where it's sitting.
Well, I mean, you can.
Until, until we dig, you know?
Well, you can go out there with a poker, right? They've got, I mean, I do them all the time, right? You can go out there and find that tank relatively easy.
Oh, yeah, I just mean, I mean, literally the exact edge of it I'm talking about, yeah. But sure, yeah, we're, that was.
You're actually showing actually two footings on top of that, on top of that tank. You're showing the proposed addition on piers, the 22.21, that corner's going there, and the 18-foot deck is going on there, so you're loading two piers on that. Something you might want to take, I mean, I.
When it was drawn, we had a mid-run going right across the middle of it. And then these, I mean, this is, this is certainly engineered framing running out the sides of this.
I don't think it's our jurisdiction, I'm pointing it out to the zoning force. When you get to him, and hopefully you'll get that far, I'm not saying that we're approving or disapproving, but if you were to get that far, I would presume he's going to look at that pretty close and say whatever he's going to say.
I'm very, very confident that we can frame that building and make that work.
Right.
Stamp, stamp, engineer's plans and everything.
You're clearly going to have to do a finding, and depending upon, well, depending upon where you finally figure out where your flood zone line is, you may have to do a finding.
Sure.
It would seem to me, David's questioning it, you're, and you were saying that your, you looked up the flood zone. You said that, right?
On the FEMA flood map on either?
So why wouldn't your land surveyor look up the flood zone?
That's a good question, and, and, well, stand on me for this one, because like I said, even though six years removed, we went through this already, we knew the floodplain was there already. So it was sort of like a, you know, and then my conversation with Drew, it was sort of, well, not casual. I mean, nothing about any of the processes here are casual, but he was like saying, you know, I don't, I don't really see any problem here. Certainly, he would have looked at this and said, I would have thought.
Well, I'm just saying that your land surveyor, which has a stamp on this plan.
Yeah.
Should be doing the work and putting on the, because here's, here's the problem. Your land surveyor stamped a plan, and on that plan, it says the following. Entire site lies in flood zone AE12. Wrong.
Yeah, this lab is 12.04. Like I said, I would, I would be applying for a Loma if this was my property, but.
I'd go back to my land surveyor and say, buddy, could you do this to me instead of, it seems like maybe you've done it, and that's not the way to do it, because you're putting his stamp in jeopardy.
Yeah, I was, you know.
Because he just certified by his stamp that this entire lot's in the flood zone, but it's not.
Yeah, I'm interested to see where that delineation actually is, because that's, that's what I noted.
We're more interested than you.
He does quote, he does quote.
You know, I tend to, if he writes something on there like that, I tend to trust it.
He does quote a filing from 716-2014.
No, I do see that, you know, but I don't see. I think your land surveyor needs to be.
That's 11 years ago.
Yeah, I'd go back to land surveyor and just bring these issues up to him. So you're going to need probably an engineer to design some drainage for this lot. He's going to have to do some drainage calculations.
Sure, that's actually pretty easy.
Well, it's pretty easy in that, so we're going to want a land, we're going to want an engineer stamp, because I'm not an engineer, I can check calculations, but I don't like doing that. I mean, if I have to, I've done them. But my point is, is we need a land surveyor and now an engineer stamp, because we need to make certain that this drainage is designed properly for the proper storm, et cetera.
Correct.
Very well.
And tell him the following, that I like to see DEP, NOAA standards when he uses his calculations. Just tell him NOAA standards if he can do that.
Sure.
A lot of people have converted to NOAA that's come in front of this board, rightfully so, because it's the best way to do it, in my opinion, and most engineers' opinion. So you're going to need an engineer and a surveyor stamp.
That's pretty surprising, because they're also civil engineers, they design septics and all that.
No, well, they can be, they can be titled. No, well, they can be, they can be titled, they can be, um, sanitary, registered sanitarians and do septic plants. They don't have to be an engineer. I can get my registered sanitaryian license, which is not an engineer license-
Sure.
And do, and do board health plans.
I just mean, because of the things that are missing, is like, well, like a drainage, you know? Dry well, I mean, that's, I should have brought that up, though, but, I mean, these are all things that can, you know, certainly, uh-
Do you have enough input from the board? I don't, I'm trying so that when you come back the next time that we have everything we need.
Yes, yes, I do, in fact, that was going to be my next question, was, you're, you know, you were speaking of a refile. When do I need to do that by? To be back here for a November meeting, if that's still available?
December now.
Okay.
December 10th.
No, but I need to bring something up, we're saying a refile based on the theory that he's going to need a written finding. He may not need a written finding, because we don't know where the flood zone is.
It, I, we do, it's within-
Oh, okay, right.
It's within, he has-
So it is, all right. So you're going to need a written finding. I just didn't know if the flood zone is off the, off the plan.
It's, it's, I believe it hits a corner of the house-
Okay.
Which puts the whole house in the flood zone.
So you're going to need written finding.
But, puts the whole house in this flood zone, but I, I don't believe the whole lot is in the flood zone.
Which is going to change all your lot coverage computations. So you've got to set that line first.
Right, right.
I will need everything by November 7th, but December 10th.
Okay.
Would you like to request an extension till December 10th?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to get a motion for, for an extension till December 10th.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second? All is in favor?
Aye. Good luck.
Okay.
And you?
You got to sign something.
Well, he's so-
Knows what to do.
You got to sign something with Mary Ann.
Sure.
Yeah, Chris?
Call the, call-
Is that one over there?
Good evening.
We're trying to see if we get some kind of a standardized plan.
Charlie?
Right, so everyone has enough information on it?
Yeah, doesn't work.
Want to correct that?
Problem is, people out here don't know. Have to know what we want, huh?
Of course.
And some people don't want to hire anybody that doesn't know what they want.
Okay, so, Charlie, would you like to read 9 Tuspaquin Road into the record, please?
Next on the new hearings is 9 Tuspaquin Road. Owners Mario and Gina Recupero request a written finding under 17417 of the zoning bylaws to construct a sunroom addition in place of an existing rear deck to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 72 parcel 8, Nashby, Mass.
Sitting on this are four regular members of Charlie, right?
Okay.
Okay.
Good evening, how are you guys? Mike Kanadi here, representing the Recuperos. This, uh, project is actually eerily similar to the last one.
What?
Much similar, uh, much, much simpler, excuse me. Um, so we would be, uh, building a single sunroom addition on sonotubes on the back side of the house, in the exact same footprint as an existing sun deck that is there. There is no proposed changing, changes to the building envelope, there's no tree or vegetation removal, and no change in bedroom count. The structure is a pre-existing non-conforming sideline setback, and all the work proposed will not change its level of non-conformity as no expansion of the building envelope is proposed. The only net result, um, basically to lot coverage would be actually a reduction from 16.5 down to 15.8 for shed structures in the house. In this case, we've planned for two dry wells to take care of 245 square foot of roof that would be on each side. We have two 50-gallon NDS flow wells that would be on each side, it's shown on the engineering plan. And that is pretty much it, it's not, the property is not in a, it's in a minimal flood hazard area on X by FEMA. And that is pretty much the scope of work. There's no change in the envelope, in the building envelope that exists, so it's, it's, uh, level of non-conformity would not be increased.
All right, Charlie, do you have any, are there any letters?
We have conservation and we have board of health, excuse me, conservation. Commission required a notice of intent permit application for this proposal. The hearing is scheduled for September 18th, 2025. And board of health, um, no issues, house is in a zone 2, and must remain two-bedroom.
So the first letter's a little bit of a problem, Mike, because you're not done with conservation.
Um, well, I went before them, uh, with an RDA application on Drew's recommendation, and the board decided they wanted an NOI.
Oh, boy.
Yeah, even though it's quite simple, um-
So just to give you a heads up, this board historically does not take, does not act on applications. Although Drew says, and we certainly took that into consideration, but it still didn't make it, uh, you know, move forward because it's an NOI, I mean, because it's an eight, um, um, determina, an NDA, right? This one, you're looking at a, a full-blown NOI. So this is going to be a problem.
Yeah, it's already been filed and on schedule for next week, I think it is.
Historically, the board won't go forward with an NOI. Because what's going to happen is, this plan's probably going to change, maybe you'll have shrubs you got to add, you know, for compensation, for store, whatever, I mean, you know what's going to happen, it's, it could, it could be. So, so it's not a determination of applicability, NDA, right?
Right.
The, what, determination of applicability, they've kicked it up to the next level, which is an, a notice of intent, which is a full-blown application.
Correct. Still being lots.
So, what's the board want to do with this?
I think we have to push it forward.
I do, too.
Continue it. Yeah, continue, I, I don't know how else we could do it.
I thought there was an understanding that it was filed, I talked to you about it, Mary Ann, and I thought that was the way we were-
Yeah.
I wouldn't have come here if I had known that. I was, I was under the understanding that, uh, because the NOI was engaged and, and ready to be heard, that just the facts of the dates of these two meetings being crisscross was not going to be an issue.
Well, why, I mean, so at this point, what are your thoughts, Charlie? I need, I'm going to, I'm going to go around with the board here, just to make sure that I'm hearing the right thing. So it's a full-blown, uh, notice of application.
I, I, I understand your predicament, uh, I think you could take a chance-
Almost just a date issue between the-
You could take, you could take a chance and try to schedule it for as short a time out as possible in the hope that everything will be resolved, but it's just a hope.
But you're not going to act tonight.
No.
So Jonathan?
I agree.
Billy?
Totally agree.
Sharon?
I guess so.
You got to be a big girl now, make the decision.
Well, let me ask you a, a dumb question. I'm sorry?
She's saying she could slip you in for October 8th.
Oh, October 8th.
Instead of having to wait, other applicants have gone to November, December, it's you. She's, she'll slip you in for October 8th. That way you could get your, your NOI done.
So there's not such a thing as you guys making a determination tonight pending, or, you know, pending the outcome? Let's just say we go through the NOI and conservation has no issues, which they shouldn't, because we're not-
We've historically not been willing to do that. We do condition some, uh-
Small stuff.
That's what I'm saying, you make, you make a decision tonight pending that, that-
Yeah, we, we've never done that, in my opinion, not to my knowledge, if we've done that in reference to a full-blown NOI.
No.
We've done it, we, we might possibly have done it in the past when you're looking at determination of applicability, and certainly Drew, Drew saying, it's going to be negative, you're going to be fine, no big deal. That's one way, and, you know, Drew sends us that letter, we've done that, I think, or when you're looking at NOI. So he thought, it seems to me, Drew thought you'd get a, a determination of applicability, which would have been negative.
He recommended that.
Didn't happen, the board now says NOI, so it seems to me the board's sitting there saying, this is bigger than we, than Drew thought it was going to be, and now we got to be full-blown application. I don't think the board's going to go any further, the, the, the board wouldn't go any further than that.
Totally agree.
I agree.
It was the opposite, maybe, but this way, it's, you know, but I think the fact that we can get you in in October-
Yeah, I, I mean, that's great, that's wonderful, I just, if, I had, I would not have come here tonight if I had known that, right? I wouldn't have wasted my time filing and wasted your time listening to me bearable.
It's okay, I, I, you know, our time's free.
If I knew that that was going to be a thing.
So are you requesting an, an extension till October, what, Mary Ann?
8.
October 8th, yeah.
You're asking for an extension till then, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, do I have, uh-
Make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
All right, so, did we want to make, take at least a second, maybe, just to make sure that everything in this plan? Uh, one thing I was going to say to you, and I should have said this before, before we voted that way, make sure that you have, um, you got lot coverage by structure, you also want to put lot coverage under zoning. So there's two lot coverages. Lot coverage structure pre, lot coverage post, meaning existing, prior and existing.
It's on here.
It's already on here.
So where's the other one?
They're right here.
Existing and proposed.
This is John's point, so he's not in the, um, velocity zone.
Lot coverage by structure.
I think you had everything.
It's all by structure. Where's lot coverage?
There's proposed and existing.
By structure.
By structures, houses and sheds.
It's not by structure. It's lot coverage, your depiction has to say two things. Lot coverage by structure, um, pro, uh, existing, lot coverage by structure proposed.
It does.
Lot coverage, no, I'm not, lot coverage existing, lot coverage proposed. It's got to be four different standards.
Structure.
I'm not understanding you, I'm, I'm, I'm seeing what's, what it says is what you said, unless I'm missing something.
All right, so here's what it has to say.
I don't think the same thing, no.
No?
Why?
Because by structure has nothing to do with the finding that a judge made, it's figure out with wetlands.
Correct.
But this is John's point, this is different.
This is-
We need to have the following. Back me for a moment.
No, you're right, I agree.
Lot coverage by structure existing, lot coverage by structure proposed, next, lot cover, no, lot, yeah, lot coverage existing, lot coverage proposed. They're not the same.
No.
Structure and, and lot coverage are two different. Lot coverage is by zoning, lot coverage by structure is for this board to understand what you're doing with this structure, and if you're increasing it above a certain point, we're not in favor of it, in some cases.
Cape, Cape and Island will know what, what he's talking about.
Yeah, they will, they will.
But it will be the same numbers.
If there's no wetlands on the lot.
Right.
Correct. That is correct, but it still needs to be in the plan.
That's why we want to know.
Yeah, I get it, I get it.
Yeah, because that in itself says that there's, so that in itself says that there is no, um, resource areas on the plan.
Okay.
Right.
But I have a question, if you're going to Drew-
Yep.
Why are you going to Drew if there's no resource on the plan?
Within his jurisdiction, because it's within a hundred-
I get it, but that makes me a little concerned, because Drew could say, well, it clips the corner of the lot, then you're, then the two aren't the same.
Yep.
You see what I'm saying? If the resource area-
Not really, but I'm, I'll go, I'll take it to the engineers.
The engineer will see.
If he'll understand.
Yeah.
Uh, so, the third item that you're saying is lot coverage by wetland, is that what you're saying?
No, 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 so again, you, what you want is four different criteria. First one is lot coverage by stru, lot coverage by structure-
Yep.
Existing-
It's right here.
Lot coverage by structure proposed.
It's here.
Next, lot coverage existing, next, lot coverage proposed, not by structure.
So in that, yeah.
That's a zoning definition issue, lot coverage. There is nothing in zoning that says anything about lot coverage by structure. It is for this board's use as to understand what you're doing in reference to structures on this lot.
Yep.
Agreed.
Is there anything else that we see? You should probably put what you're going to do with the drainage, you had spoken that it's 50-gallon, whatever, you should probably put something on the plan, just say that.
Yeah, I have, I have a cut sheet that I submitted.
I'm just trying to think if there's anything else.
So it's going from a deck to actually having roof.
Right. So, and you said you're going to put those gutters into the, yeah.
Yeah, it's shown on the engineering plan.
So, is this the engineering plan?
Right, I don't know what you have, but I have it right here.
Well, you want to make sure that that is shown on a plan that this board's going to be voting on.
Well, I can't see from here if it is, but do you not, do you not see it?
Yeah, so this is, so this is-
This is a big version with my, oh, that old guy, can't see.
Come on up.
How true that is. Yeah, see, that's not on this, that's not on this plan.
Okay.
So I would have looked at this plan as a member of this board and say, you're not carrying, you don't have any drainage in this place.
No, it's all make new copies.
Yeah, you want to make sure that gets on here. I'm just trying to cover this stuff so the next time you come.
Oh, yeah.
You're not coming a third time.
That's all that I see. All right, so we had our motions, we're all set, right?
Yeah.
We do.
Mike, you need to sign.
Yeah.
You all set?
Yep.
Yeah, I just, how come we didn't get a copy of that?
Uh, my concern is, if we would have voted on this, it would have been a problem, fam.
There should be enough copies for everybody of the original.
Well, because that plan isn't this plan. It's a different plan.
It's part of the problem.
If I don't, um, see you, have fun on Saturday.
What'd you say?
I told them to have fun on Saturday.
What's on sale?
Here you go, Johnny.
This kid's getting married.
Oh.
Don't we know everything here?
Killing a lot of trees tonight, aren't we?
We are.
Well, I think that's, that's a record.
Yeah, Wilson's Grove is going to be continued, that's the next one.
That's what I didn't want to say. Yeah, so that's five continues in a row.
Right.
Never, have, never had that, 21 years.
You notice that?
I think we're, we're walking uphill in, oh, Sisyphus, Sisyphus.
No, we go like this.
Yeah, who's the guy that walks up the hill and falls back down again?
Get your card out there, stop guessing.
All right, we're going to get through this, Chris?
We should. I wanted to continue, but the last one, it should be, should be able to get through this board, I hope.
Is it still September 10th?
No, 11th.
I, I've never done, I filed the ZBA application in Chatham.
9/11.
And they meet every week, basically, and they have like seven hearings every week.
Seven every week?
I could continue, I couldn't, I just filed it today, I couldn't get heard until November 6th, and she said I was one of seven hearings already scheduled in Chatham.
Wow.
Unbelievable. Yeah, they start at like 2:00 in the afternoon.
Wow.
Are they getting paid for this?
I don't know. It's unbelievable. I was stunned. They have two 40B projects that are going on. I think they're creating some of this, but I guess they have a lot of stuff going on in Chatham.
All right, so, Ollie, would you like to read? No, actually, Mike, this is gonna be probably a continuation, so why don't you read 28 Wilson Grove into the record?
There's a letter, yeah.
So, Mike, why don't you read it to the record?
28 Wilson Grove. Owners, Hayworth C. Neeld II and Kathleen A. Neeld, trustees of the Neeld Family Trust, request a special permit under 174-17.1 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace an existing single-family residential structure with a new single-family structure on property located in the R3 and Papaneset Overlay Zoning Districts. Map 118, parcel 80, Mashpee, Mass.
So Charlie, I think there's a letter that can be read.
There is a letter from Attorney Christopher Corrane dated September 5, 2025. Dear Chairman Bonvy, as you know, we represent the owners of the property. It is hereby requested that the hearing scheduled for Wednesday, September 10, 2025, be continued until Wednesday, November 12, 2025, as the Neils hearing before the Conservation Commission was continued. Thank you for your attention.
Counselor, you're asking for an extension till November 12?
I am, yep. They went through, they went to Conservation at their last hearing and still going on, so they, they're not getting heard until the 9th of October, so.
So you're November 12th?
That's what I've asked for.
Okay. Like to get a motion to extension?
Make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mary Ann has something for you.
Long time to hang around, Chris, with that.
I know. I must've done something not nice to Mary Ann, that she put me at the end.
You better watch it.
Have a good evening, Chris.
I still got one more to do, so.
Oh, okay.
You're doing the last one, too.
I got the last one, too, so I gotta find out what I did to Mary Ann.
Should've passed out your card to the previous five people.
Boy, I'll tell ya, huh?
Well, they wanna...
My concern is you can only give them so much direction, right? And they can come back and they may not be right again.
The laws have tightened up. Things are not like they used to be.
Nope. And it's funny about that Houghton one, 'cause I, I was sitting there, I went on the GIS, and if you look at the GIS overlay on Mashpee GIS, David's right. It's not, it's like only partially in the flood zone.
There's a surveyor stamp on that.
Yeah, so I don't know where they, but, not my project.
But the gentleman's sitting there saying, "Well, when I dra, you know, when I looked at the flood zone line..." What are you looking at the flood? The surveyor's looking at the flood zone line.
I looked at it.
Yeah, if you look at the Mashpee GIS overlay.
Wow, we don't need to get into it. I don't wanna go too far.
Anyways, not my project.
How do you say that name? Brandy?
Brandy Wine, I think.
I just call her Brandy.
I think her full name is, yeah, Brandy.
There you go.
Brandine?
Brandy Wine, Brandine, yeah.
Brandine?
Brandine, yeah, Brandine.
Brandine?
God, you're having Mike sign some of these documents. I'm not so sure if he should've been.
What?
Yeah, it's all right. It's okay. All right, so, Mike, would you like to read 9 Starboard Lane into the record, please?
Sure. 9 Starboard Lane. Owner, Brandine Dean, requests a special permit under 174-17.1 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace an existing single-family residential structure with a new single-family residential structure on property located in the R3 and Papaneset Overlay Zoning Districts. Map 118, parcel 22, Mashpee, Mass.
Counselor.
Good evening again, Mr. Chair members of the board. Attorney Christopher Corrane, representing Brandy Dean, owner of 9 Starboard Lane. This is a raise and replace application for a special permit under 174-17.1. As I'm happy to report, there is no impact of flood zone on this lot, so we're not dealing with more than one lot coverage or coverage by structures. No wetlands, no conservation, no flood zone. So it's just a standard, standard lot. As the board knows, in the Papaneset Overlay District, we have a minimum lot area requirement of 6,000 square feet. This lot has 7,000 square feet, so it's in compliance.
I'm gonna have to show.
There's a minimum required frontage of 60 feet. This lot has 70 feet of frontage, so it complies with your minimum frontage. You have a 25 front yard setback in the Papaneset Overlay District, 15 side and rear setbacks, 25% lot coverage max. We have three nonconformities on this lot for the structure. One is the front yard setback. It is currently 24.6 feet from the road where 25 is required. The second nonconformity is the southeast side yard, which is 10.4 feet where 15 feet is required. The last nonconformity is the northwest side yard, which is 14.7 feet where 15 is required. The existing lot coverage, again, no impact of wetlands or flood zone, is 18.58%, which is within the 25% max allowed. So again, what is being proposed is a knockdown and rebuild. We are, the proposed lot coverage is going to be 24.8%, which again is under the 25% maximum allowed. The northwest side yard nonconformity will be eliminated, so we're gonna change that from 14.7 to 15.3. That will become a conforming condition. We are slightly improving the southeast yard setback, going from 10.4 to 10.7, but it is an improvement. There's no change to the front yard setback. It's 24.6. It will continue to be 24.6. The new home, obviously, will be building code compliant. There will be a new IA system installed as part of this project. There are shown on this plan 200-gallon drywells, H20, 'cause it's in the driveway areas, I believe, so they will contain runoff. There are no new nonconformities being created. And as always, when I provide my narrative, I provide pictures of the house and the surrounding neighborhood. I feel that, you know, the proposal is certainly consistent with other structures in the neighborhood. So again, under 174-17.1, the board needs to find three things. One is that there are no new nonconformities being created, and there are none. Two, that there is sufficient parking. There are, in a residential zone, you're required to have two parking spaces for vehicles. We have that on the lot. And that the project is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what exists. And again, I would suggest that this project is consistent with the development. We are eliminating one nonconformity, we're improving another nonconformity, we're gonna be building code compliant, we're getting an IA system, we have drywells, we're not creating any new nonconformities, we're not intensifying any of the existing ones. So I think overall, this is a project that is in the realm of, not the right word, but certainly consistent with other projects that have been approved by this board in the Papaneset Overlay District. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
So it's going from how many bedrooms to how many?
As I understand it, it's actually being reduced from five. I think the field card shows five and it's a four-bedroom, so I think it's actually going down.
Do we have a letter from Board of Health?
But I might, I would have confirmed that with Board of Health.
They may state that in the Board of Health letter.
It does. Board of Health, no increase in flow. House plans show four bedrooms. New IA septic plans designed for four bedrooms.
There you go. Is there any other letters?
Only from Conservation, and the property is not within wetland jurisdiction. That's it.
All right, Jonathan, sorry.
That's all I really had.
Yeah.
So soon as everybody's going with a sled jammer system.
Yeah, I, it's not my area of expertise, but...
Well, and it's certainly not part of ours either, so. I'm just seeing that more often now.
I think all these things are ever-changing, and I think they have two new types of systems that are in the, I don't know what they call, like the probationary phase.
Yeah, they're, so they're doing it over in the base.
Yeah.
It used to be 10,000 square.
I don't think they can use those now.
This is pre-existing.
David, you have anything?
Yeah, I just, the, I just wanna point out this, you know, this was done by a seasoned veteran, you know, who knows their business. They are not, they aren't increasing any nonconformities. They're keeping them exactly where they are. They're 20, you know, you're 24.6 feet. That's less than, that's less than six inches from the, you know, to be conforming, but they left it there. And the other things that they, they made the side towards the house, but they got cantilevers, so it actually brings it closer to the lot line, but it's all allowable. I just wanted to point that out and say, and the last thing I wanted to point out is that we're pretty much at max.
Yes.
Lot coverage, so I don't wanna see a shed coming my way.
Absolutely.
So that's about it, but it's well thought out and well designed.
Where's the actual lot coverage specs?
So it's, Tom Bonker puts it in his notes. It's in the bottom left-hand corner.
Oh, I see.
25.8, 24.8. But again, Papaneset Overlay District is 25%, so.
So again, he, and he can do it later, and I can sign off, I guess, if the board's okay with it. It should say lot coverage by structures and lot coverage period.
It probably should just say lot coverage period, because there's no wetlands.
Right, well, that would itself would say that there's no wetlands. I get it, but it's certainly gotta say minimally, what it's saying here isn't the minimal because that's not by zoning.
No, it is by zoning, 'cause it's not, it's not...
There's nothing in the zoning that says you have to have lot coverage by structure?
Well, no, but I think the way these engineers...
We could fix this by signing off the plan, probably. My point is, if it just said lot coverage, blah, 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 then I would say, "All right, there's no wetlands. I'm okay." But if it's saying lot coverage by structure, it shouldn't say structure.
And I, I'll try to, I'll make sure that we catch those things, 'cause I think, you see a lot of these engineers, that's the way they call lot coverage. They do it by structures.
If it just said lot coverage, we'd be fine.
I don't have an issue.
Yeah, I don't either.
Yeah, no, but I understand. I'll make sure that we clean that up.
So Dave, David, you said you didn't wanna see a shed. There's an existing shed of eight by eight in the corner, and it's going to six by eight on the new plan.
They're making it smaller?
Yeah, but...
And when it goes to six by eight, it shows five feet off the lot line.
The point is, I don't wanna see any more structures coming my way, 'cause they're gonna go over 20, they're gonna go overboard.
Yeah, anything less than 120 square feet could be five feet off the property line.
I agree.
Right. So that's why they're showing it.
Well, I said that because of what Dave said.
Right, and his point's well taken. There's no, nothing else that's gonna be...
He wants to make sure there's no, no more decks or anything like that.
Yeah, it certainly maxed out the plan.
Yes.
Here you go. Couldn't agree more.
Yeah, 24.8, without a doubt. But that's okay. That's why they make rules and regulations.
Yep.
Totally get it.
Why they have rules, too.
They have what?
Rules.
All right, so let me go through my checklist here. Board questions. Board have any other questions?
Nope.
Letters, we've read it, everything into the record, right?
Yep.
David, what do you have? Do you have anything else?
I'm good.
Okay. Audience, no one. We've worn them out.
They all left?
Board questions one more time?
No.
Motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion in reference to the application, please.
Okay. Motion relative to 9 Starboard Lane. Owner, Brandy Dean, requests a special permit under 174-17.1 of the zoning bylaws to raise and replace an existing single-family residential structure with a new single-family residential structure on property located in the R3 and Papaneset Overlay Zoning Districts. Map 118, parcel 22, Mashpee, Mass., with the following conditions. Number one, motion. The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a special permit under Mass. General Laws 48, Section 9. Number two, plot plan. 9 Starboard Lane, prepared for Brandy Dean, scale 1 inch equals 20 feet, date July 9, 2025. Revisions list, nonconformities show more dimension, revised July 23, 2025. Number three, design plans. 9 Starboard Lane, date July 9, 2025, A-1, lower level plan, A-2, first floor plan, A-3, second floor plan, A-4, elevations, A-5, elevations prepared by Architect Associates. Number four, condition on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Board of Health and Conservation Department comments. Number five, any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Number six, condition that the applicant seek and obtain the Building Department review in reference to the Tree Bylaw, Chapter 175 of the Town Bylaws, prior to the application of a building permit. And number seven, the board finds under 174-17.1 and 174-33 that the proposed project as submitted is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing conditions prior to removal of the existing structure, and that there is adequate land area on the subject lot to provide sufficient parking, and there are no new nonconformities being...
Sorry to interrupt, but just a point of clarification. There's no relief needed for 174-33. We're not near a wetland.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, one, yeah. Gotcha.
So you're striking that?
Strike that? Yeah, strike the 174-33.
All right, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chris.
See you next month.
So after we sign this, I do have a couple additional topics, which I'll go very quickly through.
And I'll make sure I send Mary Ann that...
Yeah, I'd like to read it.
All right, thanks, everybody.
Very few people probably know about it.
Oh, I'm sure that's the case.
But they're gonna know about it.
Test came, it only came out within the last week.
Wow.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening.
Trash. My god, trash?
While we're signing, I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of August 13, 2025.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
At least get more. You need to get a stamp.
I know, but I'm okay with that. I would love to do that.
I thought you had already left.
All right, so a couple things, quickly here. So I got a call from Mary Ann saying that Mr. Pesci is considering retirement.
Yep.
He's gonna finish up what he's started.
Call it a day. So about a year ago, I'd reached out, remember, we had a conversation. I reached out to some other peer review people, and you saw this proposal?
I did.
I do not know these people. I've never used these people. I think that's important. They're not like my engineers. They're not. I have several engineers that I use. Two of them recommended these people, that they've had peer review done with, and they felt that they did a good job, fairly priced, and got it done quickly, and protected the town.
Yep.
And I think that's it, right? So that's what it's all about.
Where are they located?
So they're in...
Plymouth.
Plymouth, yeah, regional offices in Plymouth. And they have a corporate offices in Southborough, but Plymouth, you know.
Yeah.
Did any of the towns, do any of the towns around the Cape, around us?
I saw Falmouth and Nantucket.
Yeah, and they have, they do like 30 different towns, peer review ones.
Oh, nice.
So...
Yeah, we just need to meet them, just in person.
Yeah, I think we should get them in, have a conversation. I didn't, I haven't even spoke to them recently, but I did speak to them back then, and they were like psyched about wanting to do it, and they're like, "Yeah, great," and we do it a lot, and we feel that we know what we're doing.
So this is our decision, not the towns?
This is our decision. Planning board's using their own. I already went to Charlie Rowes, see if he'd be willing to come back. He says, "You know what? I'm just retired."
Not so much.
That didn't work. So it's our decision and my decision.
Why don't we bring them in?
Bring them in.
I'll bring them in, and away we go. That'll do that. Second issue, solar. I said to the solar, that when they're in the air, that I felt their bond was low. They did their research, and they agreed that the bond was low. Then I did more research, and I researched solar, wind, and nuclear for decommissioning. And all three of those entities utilize a five-year review period. Every five years, they review their decommissioning plan to make sure that it is still pertinent and relevant in reference to dollars and cents.
Ah, okay.
So I went back to them when they sent me an email saying, "You're right, we're a little low. We'll go up." I get it. And then I went back and says, "And you're also gonna look at a five-year review period." They're coming in October. I'll just put They're coming in October, I'll just put it on the table, and they come in, if they agree or don't agree, and the board makes a decision.
Who controls to make sure they come back every five years?
So that would be in their permit, and so they'd have to come back in five years and give a proposal to this board saying, we, we looked at it, and all this work can be done, or can't be done for that number.
Who rang, who rings the bell and says, time to come back?
Won't be probably me.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
I get it, but it's like all these drainage things that we're approving, there's a procedure, there, there's a big hole in our community, right? I started years ago tracking all the drainage stuff we were approving, rain gardens and everything that need maintenance. Well, look at all the maintenance plans we've approved, that, you know, for drainage, they have these O and M plans, you know, uh, operating manuals. They're out, after every, like, two-inch storm, they're supposed to give a presentation or proposal back to this board saying what their inspection showed.
I've never seen any.
Never seen one. Nope.
But at least we have something that if someone gets flooded in a neighborhood of an O and M plan that we've approved, we can go back to them saying, you didn't follow the procedure, you, you gotta straighten this issue out. But to answer your question, no one. You could have a full-time employee probably overseeing this stuff in our community.
No, you don't want that.
I get it. So to, again, to answer your question, I just say, we say it, we put it in the permit, and we'll see what happens.
Well, couldn't it be as simple as putting it on a, uh, calendar where it pops up and automatically sends? So it's done electronically? By the town?
Mary Ann?
No, I mean.
David? No? I don't know those five years.
I'm not sure it needs any personal involvement. If it's done correctly.
I don't know who would put that into what computer.
Well, you can do that with invoices.
Yeah, no, I do, listen.
You can do it with invoices.
There's almost no reason to put it in the permit if in fact no one's gonna oversee it. But there's so many other things that we've done in our lives on this board that we're not overseeing, that we just don't have the time to oversee.
No.
All these O and M manuals, I mean, every single drainage thing that comes in here from, from like, all these industrial zones have O and Ms. And, and in those O and Ms, it says, uh, you know, all the criteria. And I gotta tell you, we've been through that criteria, almost three or four storms a year we've already had, that fit the criteria, that they're supposed to give us reports back. Haven't seen a one. They're supposed to go and do an inspection.
So we need, we need to make sure that there's an adequate period of time for the engineer to come back and to check what we need to have checked, whatever that point is. So therefore, we need some kind of report from them on a periodic basis.
So maybe we say, we expect a report back to this board every five years.
Right.
Clearly stating whether that it's within, you know, dollars and cents or not.
And that.
If it doesn't happen, what's the penalty?
You're fired.
Yeah. Loss of the permit?
Get your solar panels off the, off the site.
Loss of the permit? I, I'm just trying to put checks and balances in.
And I, and I also learned that some solar panels are very expensive, silicone solar panels are very expensive to decommission. I don't know what kind of solar panels they're even using. So I don't know where to take, I could take this, somewhere you gotta just, you know, back up and say, listen.
Ed Pesci reviewed information from, was it Weston and Sampson Engineers, right?
Correct.
So whoever the engineering company is that does the review of this, this whole process, um, that whatever report they prepare should go to the, to the Ed Pesci, who was the Ed Pesci that we use then, right? Who can then tell us.
That would make sense, yeah.
So I think.
But I don't know how we can make sure that happens, and if, like Jonathan says, if they don't make it happen, or if they make it happen and they're short funds, and they've gotta put more money in the till, and they don't.
Yeah.
You know, what do we do?
It's a penalty.
Exactly. I don't know what the penalty is.
We have no.
Take your solar panels and take them home?
We have no, we have no money hold over them.
Well, we have a bond, but you're gonna pull a bond, that's for decommissioning, and you're just shooting yourself in the foot, 'cause now you don't have the money to decommission.
Right.
It's, it's, I've said, when I originally got on this board, and I started tracking my computer O and Ms, and I got a list of like 20 of them, and I have not seen anything come to this board in those 20.